Let's see.
Have roll call?
Mr. Schrader.
Here.
Mrs. Schatzinger.
Here.
Mr. Hanson. Mr. Gallops.
Here.
Mr. Morrison. Mrs. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Wirtch.
Here.
Mr. Split.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am Reverend Jeffrey Dodson from First Congregational Church here in Ripon. Please be with me in the spirit of prayer. Big-hearted God, you are the one who counsels us when we are in times of trouble. Give to us your guidance and wisdom and bless our work for all the days we live and abide in your creation. We trust in you, for you are our strength and our hope. We give you thanks this day for the leadership of this community, for those with big hearts who listen with compassion, for those who give with humility, for those who speak with kindness and mercy. We ask your blessing upon our leaders and their families. I pray tonight for the Ripon community, businesses and schools, athletes, students, parents, children, the elderly and their caretakers, the poor and the jobless. I ask your blessing, oh God, on our heroes, the givers and the volunteers, our healthcare workers, our grocery store clerks, our teachers, and our first responders. Help us to continue being a community that gives as mightily as we receive. We ask your blessing upon our people and our collective resources that through the work of this council, justice and mercy will be done. Give to our leaders your wisdom and counsel. Let us not forget your call to love one another as you have loved us. I pray this with my whole heart and in your holy and merciful name and in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Can I get an approval of the agenda?
Moved to approve.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval is, or agenda is approved. Are there any public comments? No public comments. Moving on to action items.
I have one, Your Honor. One of constituents reached out to me today expressing an interest in donating facial masks. Jeff Robey from Fusion Heating and Cooling, so if anybody in the public, he's looking at possibly donating and building them and making them. So reach out to him directly and he can help coordinate for an activity. He's looking at 50 or more masks for a donation for, if anybody's looking for it. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to action items. Item number one is the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Plan. This is required for participation in the CDBG program. The attachment RAD-RAP outlines the steps the city will take to minimize displacement of persons from homes if the project is funded by a CDBG. We do not anticipate any displacement as a result of the Vermont Parkway Terrace Project. However, the city still is required to have this plan in place. Staff recommends approval.
Moved to approve.
There a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We have Dave on the line for some more information on this item. Dave?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you and good evening, everyone. Yeah, this is a requirement under the CDBG program. You have to have this program in place in order to be eligible for CDBG funds. We've listed some steps in there to minimize displacement as mayor said. And again, this would only be active, I'm sorry, I have some background, coworkers here barking. This would only be active if you were using CDBG funds or if your project required displacement, but we don't anticipate any in the Vermont Parkway Terrace Project, so.
Very good.
Happy to answer any other questions you have.
Are there any questions from the council?
Does this continue on afterwards? Is this something that...
Yeah, this will be, this will be in place for all future, again, only if CDBGs funds are being used for projects. So it will be for any future CDBG project, this plan will be in place. So if you're awarded this year, it would be considered under this project. If you're, you know, applying in the future, you would have this plan in place.
Jolene?
According to the paperwork we received, and look, we have sort of suggestions, and there are checks only under certain suggestions. So my assumption would be those are the only ones that we're agreeing to? Is that correct?
That would be correct. Those are just a list of options that the city would have, and I could check those basically that are, a lot of communities when they adopt the plan, they adopt it. So we can include any other ones that you, I included them all so that you have all of them. The council will have all of them to choose from. So if there's any others that you'd like to check, we can certainly check those.
So my follow-up discussion would be, I'd like to know why, why not select them? And perhaps there could be costs involved, but I'm not sure I have enough information to make that decision is to know what the resources would go into if we were to check more of them.
Yeah, I guess, I, you know, most communities would stay away from the code enforcement because there's kind of, I don't know, it may be some additional costs with code enforcement. But that's certainly up to the city to decide which ones that they want. Adopt tax assessment policies such as deferred tax payments is another one that we did not check. I don't know if we want to get into that. Again, it's up to the city to do that. If they want to defer tax payments or adapt assessment policies, that's totally up to them. I guess, establishment counseling centers, again, that may have an additional cost to it. You know, if you were to provide that type of assistance to homeowners.
I think the answer to the question is that the project that we're looking at here is, doesn't involve any of this displacement activity. If it did, I think you could look at these individually and say, let's include those as well. We haven't been involved in a program that would require moving people out of their homes. So my thought process is the minimum on this is better than trying to grab things that we really don't need on this project. Next project, if we have that, we go after them or look at them in totality.
Al?
Can this be amended in the event that we would have another project in the future?
Absolutely.
That would may require some of the boxes that aren't checked that are germane to this particular project?
Yes.
We can do that, correct?
I can see no problem with that.
Thank you.
You can certainly amend it in the future. You could, you know, at this point, you kind of need to check them all, or, you know. There is no minimum either. You know, you have to have a few of them, and so what I did is I checked those. Typically, communities, you know, might work with in, you know, CDB projects, housing projects as well.
Again, just to reiterate, I think this is here before us just so we check boxes that have to be checked, and I would be concerned about reaching beyond the minimum that had been checked this evening. That would be my opinion.
Because I'm new, I want to make sure to ask, so if another opportunity to review this should come up, is it in the notes and will we automatically get presented with another chance to just review it? Or is that something that we individually have to bring forward if another situation like this were to happen?
I think it's safe to say that if it were to come back before you, you would get this and say, we now want to look at including other items off this list because this project may involve those type of activities. Again, I think it's more a check the box for this evening, and we need to obviously have it in place in order to get this.
Are there any other questions on this item? Hearing no more discussion, I will put this one to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That item passes. Item number two, Fair Housing Ordinance and Resolution, adopting the ordinance. This ordinance is required for the CDBG PF grant for the Vermont Parkway Terrace Project. Staff recommends approval of this one. Dave, do you have any discussion on this item? Or actually?
Yes, I do have a little bit of discussion on it. The city currently does have a fair housing ordinance. However, it's, we're not quite sure if it covers all the classifications that are covered in the, in the state statutes. We recommend that, you know, you adopt this one because it's a little bit more detailed than what your ordinance has right now. And so by adopting this, you're basically adopting the state statute and replacing your existing ordinance with a new ordinance that complies with the CDB, you know, procedures and process. And also, you know, it's basically the state, you're adopting the state statutes.
Just a piece of...
Which I believe would apply anyway.
And just a piece of housekeeping, we should probably get a motion and second on this before continuing discussion.
I'm sorry.
My apology.
Second.
Motion first.
Oh, sorry. I'll make a motion. We...
All right. David moves.
Second.
And page seconds. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? No discussion? All right, we'll take a vote on this one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item number three, Excessive Use of Force Policy. This policy is also a requirement of the participation in the CDBG program. This policy indicates that the city will not prohibit the entering or exiting of persons attending a lawful, nonviolent civil rights demonstration. Staff recommends approval of this item as well. Is there a motion for this item?
Make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And any discussion? We'll start with Dave. Do you have anything on this one?
No, again, you have a demonstration assembly, I guess we'll call it an order that we reviewed, and again, this is a little bit more detailed. Basically, as Mayor said, we're not going to prohibit the, or prohibit the use of excessive force for people entering and exiting nonviolent civil rights demonstrations.
And just for the record, the clarification that we added, Dave, was the word lawful. Obviously, we're a little bit unclear as to circumstances that might invoke this. However, clearly, if someone were to engage even in a nonviolent demonstration that would cause disturbance in a private area or even a public area, the question would be, what measures could we take? And obviously, the police department has excessive force rules and policies. So the excessive force isn't so much my concern. It was the idea that we might have to move forward and prevent people from exiting or entering the area if it is an unlawful demonstration. So we added the word lawful. Which is, I'm sure, what was intended, but it makes it clear.
Jolene?
So from my understanding, it sounds like we already had this in place, and now we're adding lawful, so we're saying we're making it more narrow. So before, any, any civil rights demonstration, whether it was lawful or not, was prevented against excessive force? And now, now we're...
We didn't have it.
What he was referring to is we already have excessive force regulations or policies. This is being very specific, again, to check the boxes for this grant. And the draft did not have the word lawful in it, okay? So I'm sure that's what was intended by the draft, but I just wanted to make it absolutely clear. Obviously, if somebody's engaging in unlawful, notwithstanding they're calling it nonviolent, but it's not lawful, we're going to do what we have to do. Now, we're not going to use excessive force, but we may have to do something with exits and entrance. So I just wanted to make that clear. So the word lawful was added to the draft that was provided to us by Dave. So it isn't just adding the word lawful to our current policy.
Let, let help me, we don't have an existing resolution on file, Jolene. We're, we're not amending one, we're actually forming a new resolution.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of the CDBG funding, they are very specific that there has to be language out there for civil rights equal across the board. So we are doing this resolution to check a box so that we can make sure we have everything aligned for the CDBG funds, that nothing can ever come back and say, the city of Ripon didn't have these policies in place. No, we're not going to allow you to have those funds.
And we're splitting hairs a little with the word lawful, but I feel much more comfortable if somebody engaged even into a nonviolent situation where they're up against doors and they're not moving. We may have to come in, move them away from the door, fire hazard or bomb threat or, I mean, come with almost anything. If we had to do that in that situation, we're going to do it under the guise that we're protecting people that are engaged in this activity as well as moving forward with protecting innocent citizens. So that's the concept. And the chief already has excessive force policies, I think is what Dave was referring to, so.
Right.
John?
Yeah, to make it lawful, do we have like a permit process or doesn't that matter?
No, that would not necessarily matter. It depends where they're gathering. You know, there's, again, spelled out by the federal government, essentially, there's case law that says what are lawful assemblies, and that's the concept of lawful. As opposed to somebody just saying, we're getting together and we're blocking the doors to City Hall and we're sitting out in the lobby without any kind of lawful assembly being taking place. We're just doing it because we're tired of people coming in out of City Hall or whatever. So there are issues that could occur that would be unlawful.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item number four.
Thanks, Dave. I want you to go now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. The following business has applied for a, or applied in the city of Ripon for a Class A intoxicating liquor license for the remainder of the 2019-2020 licensing period. Business is Condon Oil. Trade name is Ripon BP at 204 East Fond du Lac Street in Ripon, Wisconsin. Owner is Craig Baumann at 434 Stonehenge Court, also Ripon, Wisconsin. The city has one Class A license available. Ripon BP currently holds a Class A fermented malt beverage and Class A cider-only license. Is there a motion on this item?
Question. If this is granted, that puts us out of liquor licenses or we have one remaining?
We have one potential coming back, correct, Dan? That would be, yeah, one business that's looking to surrender shortly. So we'll have one back in the coffers, we believe, very shortly. But you're right, this one would put us at our limit.
None available.
None available after this one, with the understanding that we have one business that we'll be surrendering shortly.
Thank you.
I get the difference. I'm not intoxicated liquor license versus the other fermented malt. What is the difference?
I'll let Ann, she's the, we refer to that, our code is the Bible, so. I'll let Ann take this. She is constantly reviewing these issues.
The word class with parentheses around the letter A or B or C, A-B, are fermented malt beverage, like your beers, your, to use a brand, Mike's Hard Lemonade. Those are fermented malt beverages. The word class with the letter totally in quotes, that means intoxicating liquors. That's like your brandies, your whiskeys, your wine is an intoxicating liquor. So that would be class with a C. Wine is a C. The As mean purchase for takeout, like your convenience stores, Webster's, the gas stations. B, basically, in your mind, bar. So that's the difference between the different classes.
Thank you, Ann.
Moved to approve the application.
Second.
Al moved and James seconded. Further discussion?
So if a new business comes to town and we do not have another license, what, what happens then? Do we have any other options other than denying them?
Ann's coming back to answer that.
It depends what kind of business, I think. Ann will explain that.
And if I can add to that question, how many does Ripon, how many is Ripon allotted to begin with?
The Class, Class A intoxicating liquor, the council actually put a limit on the number of licenses they wanted available to approve. So council at any time can change that ordinance. And it's one per 700 and fraction thereof in population. So technically, we can have 11.17 issued. If we were at like 11.6, I'd say we were 12. But we're not quite to the half mark, and that's based on our population. And so that hasn't changed at all really since I started here. The Class B intoxicating liquor, that's set by state statute. And December 1st, 31st, 1997, we had to fill out a form, how many licenses we already had issued, what our population was, and we were already maxed out at 16. The state statute changed, it used to be fraction thereof, but now it's per thousand population, and you get an extra one. If Ripon would go up to 8,000 in population, we would get another Class B license, and that would be a reserved license. And I don't know if any of you have heard where municipalities are collecting like $10,000 for a license, plus the license fee. That $10,000 would be a one-time only, that whoever that establishment that was awarded that reserve license would have to pay, but that license would always be a reserved license. So if, let's say, one of the establishments that have been around for a long time would surrender their license, that would not become a reserved license. So.
Right now, we have no, we have no Class B available, they're all?
Um, we're currently at 12. We have four available.
That's what I thought. I thought we did have Class B available.
Yep, we have four currently available.
And you're telling the council that the A that we're talking about this evening, the council could expand that?
Yep.
There's no state limit on...
Not on Class A, just Class B.
Council set it at 11.
Council set it.
So to, just to further clarify, a Class A would be somebody, an establishment, being able to sell bottles of liquor as opposed to using up this Class A license would not affect somebody wanting to open a bar and get a license, correct?
No, totally different.
Okay.
Yep, and we have four bar...
Four Class Bs, yep, four bar ones.
Available. That really is the high ticket, and what Ann was saying, we'd have to get a little bigger to get a reserve. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Can be very confusing.
Sounds like that was also a plug to have everyone a reminder to fill out their census.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you have a motion on this? Did we get a second? Okay. Oh, that's right. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes. Next item is update on the COVID-19 employment policy. Staff has no recommendations at this time. Is there any discussion on this? If not, it will come back at the next meeting. Al?
Lori, what, the, the, the policy doesn't talk about in-state travel, travel to hotspots in the state. That, that may be something we want to look at when we look at this again.
We can look at that, sure.
Says CDC information and those type of things, talks about out-of-state travel, but we may want to look at in-state travel in areas that are designated as hotspots within the state. Just a suggestion.
Mm-hmm, good one.
We currently have three hotspots in the state. Four? Four?
Dave just joined the list.
He did.
There's no more discussion on this?
I just do have one quick, and I don't know that it matters, with the office closures and Section 10, with the library being closed to the public, I know it's still closed, but does that have to be updated because there's curbside pickup allowed or no?
I know they're working on it. I don't know if they've started it yet, but that is a good point. We can, I'll confirm when that is effective and we can update that too. Thank you.
I believe it started the curbside, Monday or Tuesday of the...
Today?
Okay, great.
Yeah, I had to wait until that first safer-at-home term was over, I think, so yesterday maybe?
Yeah. But I know that's on the agenda for the library building tomorrow, so. But I know that's on the agenda for the library board tomorrow, so. Any other questions or discussion? And we'll revisit that at the next meeting. Bring on two project updates and staff reports.
I did want to remind everyone that Board of Review is scheduled for Monday, June 1st at 4:00 PM. And we are required to meet for a minimum of two hours. And the Board of Review members, just for the newer members, that's council member Schrader, Wirth, Hanson, and Kane. So, so please mark your calendars for June 1st, 4 to 6. And then I also have our April anniversaries. We have Randall Bone from the Public Works Department, one year. Shane Kwakal from Public Works, also one year. Travis Borkenhagen in the Police Department, two years. Jesse Tipton, Police Department, four years. Linda DeKramer at the Library, 26 years. And Officer Trevor Hanke, 29 years.
To that, Lori, do we have ours set for our open book yet?
I do believe, it's being handled a little differently this year because of-
I want, that's-
As a COVID, yes.
Pandemic.
They can schedule an appointment online, or?
Yep.
It's being handled virtually. Either phone call, Zoom, email. The notices went out last Friday to all the property owners that had assessment changes. We do have our 2020 Assessment Rule for Real Estate and Personal Property on our website. It's on our assessor's website, and it's also here physically, if someone physically wants to come and look at the book. All the appointments are through our assessor. So it will not be here, it's in the council chambers as normal because of COVID-19. And the notice did go in last Thursday's paper on how it was going to be handled. And that notice is also on our website and also posted outside.
Thanks, Ann. Mike, do you have anything?
I don't.
No. Chief, you? No. All right. Anything else for you, Lori?
No.
All right. And moving on to an appointment to the Plan Commission. I am recommending Doug Iverson for the Plan Commission. Moved to approve Doug Iverson for Plan Commission.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? He is approved. Have one communication, just a reminder to all council members. If you're unable to attend a council meeting, please inform a city administrator ahead of time, just so we can make sure that we have a quorum. I have. Are there any recommended agenda items for future meetings?
I was thinking with the four new members and the new mayor that maybe in a month or so, we should go through the healthcare benefits that the city offers the employees. It's seen, to me always, we get to the end of the year with the budget coming up, and then it's just thrown at everybody. And this year, we have four new members that will be voting on it, so. If we could, I'd like to go through it and what the cost is to the city and the benefits that they get.
All right. Anything else?
I know I talked to you last time, and you said to be sure to announce this, so I don't know if this is the place to do it as far as perhaps future agenda items, but considering we are under technically a state of emergency, correct, I do think it is appropriate to address important community information. And so just to, again, you said, I know many people here have been a part of this, but there is a website, riponcovid19.org. And this is for if people from the community either want to help or need help related to the current pandemic. And so, and a reminder that if people have cloth masks, that right now Ripon Community Church, as well as our Savior's U C C, are two drop-off locations. And of course, our Great Local Business Grant Pack and Ship is a drop-off location for anyone that has sort of manufactured P P E, so N95-type things. I, I do, I don't want this to go into a long talk, so if it was agenda item, I fear that it could go long. However, I think if there are things good for the community to hear, this is one of the few places that gets out to all of community meetings. And so I think it, I guess I'm making a case that to add relevant, an agenda item relevant to information that's good for the community under the crisis.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do you adjourn?
It works out in the gym fairly often. The, the free weights tend to get heavier use from males. Females tend to go more toward the machines. Are we replacing this equipment in a way that is accounting for the needs of both our boys and our girls?
I think the, the stuff that we're trying to target right now is in pretty bad shape. Like it's rusted, the benches are ripped, the, the weight racks are unstable. So the things that we're replacing right now are in really bad shape. I think some of our machines are actually in excellent condition. I think some of the, they're some of the newer pieces that we have in the gym.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Betsy. I have to admit, I was wondering that myself.
Yeah, very good question. And it's good to qualify that.
Are there any other questions about this upcoming action item? Okay, hearing, hearing none. Let us move to the next item, which is legislative updates. And I'll ask Mary to summarize the most important updates.
Absolutely. I can tell you, as I speak with the other administrators, that our inboxes have been overflowing as never before. And it, as I know Chrissy said a couple times with staff, I look at the data on this and it feels like it was months and months ago already with the information. The, the good news, as you'll see and hear, DPI is moving forward with a process to approve waivers for instructional minutes so that it will be much easier for us in terms of, of moving forward with our work this year with teachers and students online. While we are going to be coming forward to the board, we actually need to do a public hearing to have the board make that request to, to DPI. I do want to ensure you that we have a plan to interact and connect with all of our students and ensure that everyone is involved in participating and learning as we go forward. This is new territory for us. But to have the support from the state to make things reasonable and possible is, is so very appreciated. And one of the things you'll notice is that there is a pause on state testing. And so in some ways, we get substantial instructional minutes back because our kids won't be involved in testing this spring because it would be nearly impossible to do that virtually. Other things that you'll see, there are just some, some information regarding special education. Obviously, it's not ideal to meet the needs of our students who have special needs remotely, but we'll continue to do what we can online. Speech and language is something that, you know, we'll continue with those therapies. I know even FIAE teachers were talking about getting equipment to students that they could use at home and trying to provide support wherever we can. We have added our instructional aid support team and assigned them, in many cases, to work more closely with our special education teachers to try to just double the staff that we have to be able to push in and do some of the support things. But again, we're learning as, as we go. The other item that's listed here in this update is with regards to school meals. And as of today, we did begin our process for curbside pickup of meals, including a breakfast and a lunch. And that is for anyone who is 18 or under that's in our community to be able to come and, and pick up those meals, to be able to have that, that breakfast and lunch. So it goes beyond even those students who participated in our free and reduced lunch program in the past. We do want to make sure that we get meals out to anyone that needs them. And so we've asked for families to contact us if they need to have meals delivered to them. We served 160-some meals today with the curbside pickup. And then maybe another 10 or 12 went out through delivery. But we definitely want to get that word out to our community that if they are unable to come to us to pick up the meals, we will find a way to get the, the food and the meals to them so that our, our children are fed. And I continue to hear of the shortage on the grocery shelves of food. And so I think it's really important for our families to know that this service is there.